Call it water, sorry.
You calling it water now?
Calling it water now. Selecting board meeting, so Monday, January 13th.
5:03.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes from?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written for the November 4th meeting.
Is there a second?
All second.
All right, is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stay opposed?
We're done. We can't do the December 9th minutes because the other two aren't here.
Right.
So we got two more minutes. Can't really do much in two minutes. I'll be back.
We said we can't sign that, right?
No.
No.
Well, if you weren't here.
I was in there. So you're waiting for another minute?
Yeah. Just 5:05 to make it official, but it must be fine. And we're waiting for Lily to come back, too.
It's nice to see Madison at the Lions meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
How often do you meet? Roughly every two weeks, about, sometimes it's three. I think our last meeting was, it's been a while, five or six weeks.
Holidays and stuff?
Holidays.
Yeah, the holidays, we took a couple weeks off. We usually have each second Monday of the month.
It's just a general knowledge for me type of thing. More to come. Not, not per se anything other than barns and such, but.
Yeah. Every second, fourth Monday of the month.
Every fourth, every fourth Monday?
Second and fourth Monday, yeah. Those are our scheduled meetings, yeah.
Yes, forgive me sometimes, too much equipment.
That's okay.
Let's see if he can figure out the button.
Yeah.
So, 5:07?
If you could throw that out the back, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
We can do the A and R.
Yeah, we'll do the A and R. It's 5:05. Mr. Clark?
What do you need?
Uh, A and R. Need some plans.
What's that?
You need some plans. Do you have some plans?
Here you go.
All right.
I was told one of these you're really gonna want.
Yes, the Mylar. There's your two Mylars, you want those? One we really want.
One you really want. Do you need more?
No, I just wanna explain this to us.
Do I wanna explain it to you?
Sure. What do you plan on doing here?
Um, I've given my son a lot.
Okay.
For him to build a house. And then we're uncertain yet whether 198 is gonna get added on to, but that's neither here nor there. And then the old barn that's kind of fallen in, at some point or another, is gonna get replaced so that the family farm gets back to going and the whole family's there.
So what, what is the current lot right now?
Uh, it's 12 acres.
Okay.
So you're curving out this sort of?
Yep, just in the corner between across, I don't know if you're familiar with where the cemetery is.
Yep.
So the cemetery's here, Bronner's house is here, this would be Chris Bennett's, and then it would be here, and then the rest of the lot is.
So this is currently from here all the way over yours?
Yes.
And you're making this carve out this one section?
Yep. Oh, my grandkids grew up with all that good stuff. We tried making it too so that, so that you did realize that there's no intention of, even with this here being pasture, the way we stretched it this way, so there's no intention of adding lots to this. That's not my goal in life, to grow houses. I grow cattle. So.
So assuming you're gonna build a house on here, the access will be somewhere along here.
Okay.
Okay. We already got.
That's what I'm gonna do.
We have all those we have to sign. We need a check in that form you have there.
You need a check, too?
Yep.
I didn't realize that.
Okay.
So who do I get it to and how much do I have to bring in?
It's two, it becomes two lots now.
So it's 250.
125 per lot, so it's $250.
Oh, even though I own this already?
Right, imagine that one lot found to be two lots. It does, it's, so when they register it, it's two different lots now. See, you've actually changed this one lot to a different lot now.
Okay.
Even though you already own it? And this, so this is a separate lot, now this, this lot figuration has now changed. There's no longer the same.
Okay.
So it's a new lot.
Oh, okay. Can I bring that to Kathy Lynn? Or no? Or is it gotta be here?
It's usually gotta be here before we sign off on it.
Okay.
Um, well.
How long are you here? I'm not, I'm not very far away.
We got another A and R to go through and a couple other things, so say an hour anyway.
Yeah.
Oh. I can be back.
There you go.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
That's all right.
So he'll sign all of those?
Yeah, that's all right. If there's any issues with it.
You'll need all of these?
We do.
Yep, we have to sign all of them.
Okay. Shows you how much I have on this.
Yep.
So you keep this with that. And you take this with it. We gotta wait until the sign, and the sign will come back.
Yeah.
See, 250.
Made out to the town board.
Very good. I'll be right back.
We'll be here. Thank you.
Mr. Porter.
Mr. Porter.
Did you want to wait or?
No, he's.
He might as come up now.
You wanna put those over here for them?
Yeah.
You got room over there? Okay. Works better with them.
You can start.
Good evening, my name's Edward Chapman, 356 Front Street, survey for the project. What I have before you tonight is a form A or approval not required subdivision under the state rule for a business zone, if you will. What we're doing is creating, there's an existing building here at 120 West Street, we got a power line to cross. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the area. All the storage is across the street. The Fins Hill is right over here, so. Fins Hill is right here. The Christmas Tree Farm is back here. Basically, that's the open field behind the 120 West Street. So, we're filing, meet all requirements, 40-foot access strip, 80,000-plus square feet. Remaining land, if you will.
So you're creating a business estate law?
At the present time, yes.
Our first one.
Yes, yeah, it's relatively new by law.
Yeah. So instead of one lot, it's two. It'll be going into two. Got your access here.
Current one, access to you.
Like any site plan, we're gonna have to come back anyways once, once Mr. Mary knows what he wants to do with the property. The other thing you have to stick, like, I ran out of Mylar, so I've got one more coming in tomorrow. If at all possible, Mr. Porter can take the signed copy and deliver a extra Mylar to Kathy tomorrow or at your next meeting, or it's up to you. Who knows a little lot of sequence?
Have him drop it off to Kathy?
Have him drop off Kathy, maybe just stop by and sign it.
Cause that'll be our copy.
It'll be our copy, but yeah.
Mr. Porter is intending to record this at the registry by the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah, for retail next week, that's not 27.
Right. Yeah.
I don't anticipate recording this until after the next meeting, so we could actually come at the next meeting. Sort of as easy as for you.
If you wanna retain it, and then they'll come back and pick it up, or you can sign it at that meeting, or you can sign it tonight.
Well, I'll put it this way, if you don't have any intentions of doing anything before the end of the month, then I'd rather have you come back at the next meeting, just to make it nice and clean.
I can deliver that to Kathy tomorrow. Sorry, I ran out of my order, but on Friday, anticipated the meeting here today, and printed it, it's gonna show you tomorrow.
But if you're going to do it before the end of the month, you can make that exception.
I can come at the next meeting. Sure, can you come and get it?
I can, I can be here at the next meeting, or Steve's show. It's just, at this point, it's a full mountain.
It's out of us, yeah.
Yeah. And you'll have all five signatures, eh?
Correct.
Maybe.
It should be a full, hopefully, a full one.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, so we'll wait until the next one.
And I'm not sure the filing fee is, either the applications.
It's, uh, it's now 120, it's 250.
Do you wanna make the check out now and give it to them, that way it's the first thing we have to do?
If we do that, we'll just leave it with this.
We'll stay with this. Yeah.
Do you wanna go ahead and do it?
No, town board.
You wanna go ahead and do it, please?
Sure.
We actually don't need three, we need two. We need a ten. We got it.
Today's the 15th.
Yep.
The 250, is that correct?
Yes. And you can keep the other.
So I'll leave all the material with you, along with the filing fee.
Yeah.
Do you want us to give it to Kathy, or will you show it the next meeting with the extra Mylar?
You can show it for the meeting, whatever's easier for you, if you wanna drop it off.
I do have a Mylar. So, it's on order, it's coming in tomorrow, and Mylar's the plastic fill-in that's just returned by here. That gets recorded, the registry deeds, they retain one copy for their members.
It was easier for you guys.
So I basically approved the.
Yeah.
Do you wanna present it at the next meeting, so we have all the members?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, we could do that, we could quickly present it, but I mean, there's no issues to it.
Yeah. And I'll leave everything with you. Now, let me ask a question. Two weeks from tonight, we have a major snowstorm. When we meet then, after that?
The next day, or?
Yeah, for some reason, we have a major snowstorm, we'll make accommodations, get it signed for you. Okay, so, yeah, we won't make it wait. We'll make it wait another two weeks.
We live annoying.
Yes. But if for some reason that happens, just, you know, let Kathy know, remind us, and we'll schedule something sooner or later to.
But we'll have to have it on the agenda anyway, so we can discuss it.
Right, right. A little bit of agenda, so. That's gotta be a real bad snowstorm to kick around.
Let's roll this up inside, so nobody answers the check. Um, I don't know, we'll lock it up later off camera.
Really, we're trying to sign off on one of these here.
Oh, this is unusual, we can't sign off on anything. Okay, do you wanna go through, um, the rest of the agenda, or do you wanna postpone the rest until?
I guess I'll go through it, or go on a wait, well.
Yeah, we've got the, um, do you wanna wait and have everybody sign? We don't have to.
I'd rather have everybody sign it.
Okay, so that's gonna be postponed. Then, so the, um.
That doesn't, that doesn't affect them, does it?
No.
Okay.
Um, so the decision. Where is it? I'm gonna use the planning board, the D L T A. I'll put it over here. It's gotta be old business, cause it's not new anymore.
What are you looking for, though?
I thought I had it on the, uh, my minutes already, but the, uh, the, um, approve and sign.
Oh, McKennitt?
Dollar, general sign decision, special permit.
Oh, yeah, I thought you had it, as I say, it is on the.
Yeah, it's here.
Yeah, but you don't have it there.
But, um. So Glenn suggested we wait until everybody was here, to sign off. Okay with that?
I can't even recall if I can sign off on that or not, I don't know if I missed a.
I think you missed a couple of them.
Yeah.
No, I think you could.
Wait until the next meeting. Okay, so that's that one. Then you have the select board, um.
They're just, they're looking for input from us.
Right.
As far as the town planner position, that they're looking to, um, add.
You got that from Kathy in the mail?
I did.
Did you get a chance to look at it?
Briefly.
Okay.
Again, that's something I like for the, to get comments from the full board on.
Okay. So postpone to the next meeting?
Yeah, I looked at it, I didn't see anything that really stood out, more than what I wanted.
I had a couple of typos and one, um, one certification that should be in there for a planner.
Yeah, the only thing, and I actually talked to Chris about it, was I wasn't sure as far as, you know, the planner, um, it was something about, uh, like, a supervision and a direction, where I wanted, there's direction given from the planning board to the planner, that, I wanna make sure that's, I can't, I can't remember exactly.
And it's not circumvented by his supervisor?
Something like that, I wanna make sure that.
Cause he's got two different.
Right, and I mean, he's basically working for the planning board as well, so I wanna make sure that the planning board is one of the, um, uh, supervisors is the word I'm looking for, but.
That has input?
Right.
Feedback, input?
If we need him to do something, or her to do something, then we should have the ability to say, this is what we need.
Right, and that should be in our minutes.
Right.
Which Chris would get.
Right.
So he would know anyway. And hopefully, I, I had a question, too, of, okay, then who's gonna make the decision? Conservation, planning, which is more important, which do you focus on?
Right, that's, I guess, right, so.
So, we'll have to, I guess.
Well, I was reading it over, it's one spot that kinda highlighted.
Yeah.
But like I said, have the rest of the board members here, we can talk about it.
Okay, so postpone to the next meeting. The D L T A application? I, I put a copy. Administrative. Here's correspondence. That's under correspondence. This is the, um, job description. This is the D L T A stuff. I didn't know if that would help you explain it. I don't know if you, Rob saw the select board meeting the last time? The last time?
On TV, no?
No, okay. Do you wanna wait and explain that, or do you wanna explain some of it now, or?
Well, again, just wait till the whole board's here, it's not, we don't have to explain it again, that's what I'm discussing.
Okay.
Postponing it or not?
Yeah, but you can see it.
Pardon?
You gonna postpone a second?
Yes.
We can actually have a copy, I don't know if everybody got a copy emailed to them or not.
To the planning board?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I got it.
All right.
As a PVPC rep. But then when I listened to the select board recording, they're going to answer it.
Maybe, yeah, I mean.
For the town.
Right. So if we wanted to, we could, you know, we could email it to all the members, so if someone wants to speak to it at the next meeting, instead of.
Okay.
Instead of waiting for the next meeting and talking about, at least somebody will have their eyes on it, kinda see if there's any input, anything they wanna say in regards to it. I mean, it's gotta, I think it's gotta be, yeah, it's gotta be anybody before Friday, this is coming Friday, so really, it's, I guess, it's kinda.
We can't wait for them.
We can't wait, no, no, I see the bottom.
Well, you're just kind of informing us.
Yeah, that's all, cause we really, I mean, if anything stood out that we didn't, that was concerning to us, I mean, that's something we could, you know, talk to them.
Well, the only thing I thought about was help with the master plan, but I believe that's part of what the select board decided.
Right, that was one, that was one of the areas that the select board talked about, it was the master plan as well.
It kinda ties in, Rob, with the letter we got from the select board, from the Economic Development Committee, saying the master plan needs to be updated.
Needs to be, or is that mandated by?
Oh, it needs to be.
It needs to be, it's supposed to be updated every, what, seven years?
Five, seven years?
Yeah, but you don't have to wait that long.
No, you don't have, but there's a, but that's something that we're looking at doing, uh, with the.
But we can have PVPC help with that, and we kinda coordinate the whole thing.
I wasn't here when they did last time, but I think they helped last time, too.
Larry Smith last time did just one chapter in it.
Yeah.
One chapter, chapter 10.
Yep.
So that's been updated more than the rest of it.
So, well, that's fine.
That's a big document.
Yeah.
It's online.
Yeah, no. Didn't really come into play during the soli discussions a couple months ago.
No, no, we had a lot of things we were doing.
There's a lot of things downstairs from the master plan, there's still some bulletin boards and stuff like that, poster boards.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
When it was discussed way back when.
So do you wanna pause in this and finish that?
Yes, since they're back so quickly. What's that, what else that?
Who gets it? I'm sorry.
She'll record it.
I shouldn't, I should have known.
You should have. I'll turn it to Kathy in the morning. Okay. These are mine, these are the rest of the check.
Okay, so, two lines we get from this. This one we keep, and this one goes to registry deeds.
And the rest of those go to the different town?
Yes.
So, start signing.
You did that, huh? No?
No. Let's see, you've got conservation, you've got, how many you got there, five?
Yes, five.
Okay, conservation board, fire department, DPW. I missed one. DPW and maybe the police, but. Your conservation. I'm not sure, I'll have to ask Kathy. I'll find the problem.
Do I give you the she hands lot?
Oh, she hands lot?
She'll take care of it.
You just walk away tonight with one of these.
You give it one, this one, one of Mylars, you need to take to the registry deeds.
With all of our signatures, otherwise I'm gonna take it.
And what do you do, actually?
And we'll take care of all of this, please.
We keep all the other ones?
Just because we like paper.
Or does my lawyer take care of that when it goes to transfer that to, he registers it to me, and then?
I, I don't know, I'll get your lawyer doing it.
We may, we may think, uh.
So you guys got the beef ranch, doesn't it come from that, or?
What's that?
The beef ranch? Well, not currently, we're gonna be putting that, the one that was there back together.
Okay. There hasn't been any beef cattle in there for three years.
There's another one down this.
At Sharters, a little bit up the street.
Double C, those are down there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not that far. Actually, as a kid, I used to buy my hay from that farm to feed my animals.
You don't want to learn kids' sport. I'm thinking a lot of this.
For me, it's the pack. Come on. Yeah, right, that one, too. Make it better, I think it works.
We get one?
It's yours. And that is it? It's here. Here.
So in Mylar's plan, so I have to go to the.
I go to the building.
Okay, you guys are done with this?
Yeah.
Well, this was easy, actually.
Go back here, it's hard.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a great day.
You, too.
Take care. You're welcome.
It was very nice to see you again.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sure you'll follow, next time you see me.
Oh, I'm sure you'll follow, next time you see me.
Because here, I brought this so I could stuff these in because it was really.
Alrighty then. Although, one thing I had to bring up from the, uh, select board, was that eventually, they're going to be using the, this area for some town pop, so a lot of our stuff downstairs. I did talk to Chris about a lot of the A and Rs and plans, all the stuff we have down there, kind of got to look at it, and we said, well, put a, a place that it restored, uh, some of the thought process was maybe storing it up here, having some file cabinets along the, along the walls and putting it up, um, we don't know if there's going to be enough room, so I was looking at some other options, but eventually we'll be moving it all out.
We had talked, what, three, four years ago now, about converting a malt to electronic?
Electronic, well, that might be the way to do it.
But we don't know how much money we have.
Right, so, either way, it's going to, like I said, we'll have to look at that, because they probably have to purchase some type of storage units for it.
Yeah, and it'll have to fit up here somewhere. Because the tall file cabinet over there isn't really working for, I mean, the plans stand up, but you can't find anything, and neither is the two drawer lateral.
So, it's something we can look at, maybe, maybe it's time to start scanning them all in, and keeping them that way, and I don't think you have to have a.
Um, I don't know, we couldn't do that, somebody else.
No, no, someone else would have to do it, right, we'd have to pay someone to scan.
But we'd have to thin out what we have downstairs, as to what we really need.
Right.
And then we have that little closet down there with four or five, four, five drawer file cabinets.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff down there.
A long, long time ago.
It's a legal requirement, how long do we have to keep them?
Well, those are things we probably have to look at, at all the actual dates, how long, how many years have they kept for, and stuff like that, and I know Bob, it's down there some time ago, and it's not the best filing system, that's been over the past year, year, and year, so.
Yeah, I wandered in the, um, the little room down there, and it's full of mouse droppings and everything else, and it's really filthy in there.
Yeah, so.
But.
So, I'll, I'll get more information from Chris on that, but that's eventually the way it's going.
But that, that's going to have to be, like, before summer, maybe?
Uh, I don't know, it depends, I mean, they, they have to hire the person first, you know, so, I mean, that's, you know, we could work around it too, but eventually that's going to be the, the plan.
But then you got to move people from other areas in here too, or, don't know yet?
Yeah, I don't know yet, that's wait to see, I don't know if that's going to happen or not.
So, okay, I was going to say, if they said, if they were taking, like, all of downstairs, and they said you have to move everything out of there.
And there's, I mean, there's a lot of some thought process, everything, we can't just, a lot of things that we looked at before, we could say, yeah, we can do this, yes, we can do that, we got to look at the.
Yeah, because there's maps for us in conservation down there.
Right.
Have you been down there? Yeah, you seen all the big boxes of?
So, a letter was being sent to conservation, but because I'm on the select board, I just kind of delivered the.
Delivered the good slash bad news?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that will be, uh, something we'll be looking at in the near future, and figuring out what we're going to do with all that stuff.
Okay. Now, we looked up at the, um, select board representative for Route 202 study.
Yes, so, that came up, and I was thinking, maybe see if, I don't know, I wanted to ask Bob, if Bob wanted to be involved in that.
Mm-hmm.
Just because of Bob's background in construction and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if I want to wait, see if that's something he, maybe he wanted to do or not.
Um, we, there was no, um, deadline.
I don't think there's, I don't know if there's an actual deadline that they need, it must be, I would imagine, they're just going to give us one, so, and unfortunately, Bob's not here this evening, so, that's my.
I'll make a motion.
So, when I, when I thought of that, I, I thought about Bob, just for his, his construction background, stuff like that, and, you know, knowing a lot of the stuff that he does, that might be beneficial for that, so.
We agree.
Yeah. He'll get here to agree.
So we're going to postpone that one, hopefully we can, um.
If not, I'll, I'll, I'm going to make a note, I'll ask Chris, if you can't postpone it, I'll, we'll fill Bob in as a person, if Bob, um, does not want to do it, so that's something to look at as well.
Yeah, if Bob, maybe, maybe you can talk to him and, and see him, and then we can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to him.
Postpone, um, making a motion to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see, I'll see where, what the date is with Chris, I'll call him and find out, and go from there, if we, if we have time, then I'll just, I'll wait.
Okay, um. So I'm going to say that you are going to get further information from Chris Martin as to the deadline. Okay?
Alright.
So the next one. You have your, the annual town report, this is Kathy's, she didn't send it out to everybody, usually she does, but she just put it in the folder, saying. Do you want to read it?
Sure, I want to read it out loud. Happy New Year, this is a short reminder that all annual town reports must be submitted to the select board office by February 21st, 2020, you can email it to see the attachment, which is her email, or easier, put it on a thumb drive and bring it to her, the report needs to be compatible to Microsoft Word 2010, and if you have any questions, please contact her, so.
What was she looking for for us?
The same thing we did last year, we'll add in.
Well, yes, and I sent you a copy, um, what was this, and this, this was the spreadsheet, that's the backup for it, this is what she's looking for, is this right here.
It's a short, just a couple paragraphs of what we did.
Um, that was, I sent it last week, I think.
Yes, you did, yep.
Okay, um, and that, this spreadsheet is just backup for the numbers that I put on the top there, and then, everybody needs to think about, you know, how can we look good, and, put that wording in there, I may have forgotten something, but, this lists, each, um, each meeting we had, and if we didn't have any, it just concerns itself with A and Rs, public hearings, special permits, and site primary views, so if we didn't have any of those, it's just the meeting dates, and nothing, so all the meetings are accounted for, because we also say how many meetings we had for the meeting, for the year, we had more meetings, we did a lot more in 2019 than we did in 2018.
We had a lot of meetings, yeah.
From 29, we went up to 36.
Seems like we were meeting almost every week.
So this is something that you're maintaining?
It, it was just easier.
Okay, I understand.
But the planner can do that.
The planner can do that.
Yes, very easily, I would just, every couple of months I'd update the sheet, so it wasn't all at one time, and it's all taken from the minutes anyway, so, not a hard thing. So, we'll wait until next?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm bonding right along. Um, there's two, um, public hearing, uh, two notices here, I don't know if you want to read them.
Public hearings? Oh, okay. I mean, they've been posted already, I think they're just copies to us, but. The Granby Board Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 27th, 2020, at 6:30 PM, at 10-B West 8th Street, Senior Center, Granby, Mass., 01033, to consider the petition of Advocate of the Granby Bone Gun Club, Inc., seeking appeal to cease and desist order of the Granby Building Inspector concerning violations of the Granby Zoning Bylaw 6.29, Special Permit Ordinances Concerning Substantial Expansion of a 500-yard range at 85 Chickaby Street, Granby, Mass., known in MAP 15 Parcel C-3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12, as alleged and described in the letter dated November 25th, 2019, from the Building Inspector to the appellant. In addition to above hearing, the Board of Appeals intends to conduct a public meeting following said hearing at time permits, the notice is given pursuant to Chapter 48 and Chapter 39, Section 23B of the Massachusetts General Law.
Okay, one down.
Uh, Town of Granby, legal notice, the Select Board and the Town, and the Town by Law, and the Town Bylaw Review Committee will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, at 10-B West 8th Street, in the Senior Center Large Meeting Room, relative to the following, amendment to general bylaws of the town, by replacing existing chapters with new chapters, 1 through 8, copy of the full text and said amendments are available from the Select Board Office, Town Annex, and the Town's website, www.granby-ma.gov.
Okay, on a roll here.
And the public notices.
This Kathy sent to everybody today, uh, Blue Wave Solar.
They're kind of broad questions, I mean, stuff to come in, I mean.
Well, they're broad questions, and we have a moratorium on right now, and we haven't heard back from the Attorney General yet, which would really alter the answers.
Right, exactly, because the moratorium ends January 31st.
Yes.
So, yeah, right, January 31st, the moratorium is still in place till then.
Um, so do we want Kathy to respond?
Yeah, we can have Kathy just respond at this current time, there's a moratorium in place until January 31st, 2020, um, and we're currently waiting for the Attorney General regards to changes to our bylaws, reflect, reflecting, uh, large solar panels.
To rule, waiting for them to rule, right, to rule on our.
To rule on, well, accept it, I guess, I don't know if the elements that you're ruling are accepting them, or approving them, after they're approving them, that's what they would be doing.
The proposed, I don't know if I can spell it.
But again, I don't know, you know, I don't know what size they're talking about, or whatever, so, I mean, it's, it's very vague as to what.
Yeah.
Yeah, because some, some are still by size, or allowed by right, too, so.
Some of these are, are questions that the state has put in their requirements, like if we combine adjoining parcels, can we increase the continuous area covered, and that, that goes into a whole different things.
Right, because now you're getting to be a larger scale, yeah. Something, yeah, right, without actually knowing what they're, showing what they're talking about and stuff like that, again, with the moratorium in place right now, it's.
So all we're saying is, at the current time, there's a solar moratorium in place until January 31st, 2020, we're currently waiting for the Attorney General to approve the proposed solar bylaws, bylaw revisions, voted in by the town in September, I'll put the date in.
Right.
Okay, and, we just have the old business there.
Old business, you sponsor the Select Board July 15th.
I'll put this back in. Do you want to keep that one, you want to put your name on that one?
Yes.
Okay. I'll put this in, here. Um.
Is that going to be mailed out?
But, yes. And so, respond to the July, you want to postpone that, because?
Yeah.
We don't have a full.
No, full board.
What was the July 15th one?
Um, I sent that to you too, on that email, it was, uh, Economic Development, um, Committee Recommended Two Things That The Planning Board Should Look At, one was rezoning, um, the old dump, isn't that one of them? The old dump area, right around there, and the other was updating the master plan, did I remember that correctly?
The one thing that I was talking about, the master plan being updated.
Yeah, but we, we are actually in violation, because we didn't respond in writing to them within 30 days, so we have to, we have to respond at the next.
Well, maybe we'll make up a letter and respond, that's all.
Well, we have to give, you know, more than, yes, we're going to get it done, or something.
No, no, but, I mean, the master plan is, it's, that is something that's going to be put on the review, that is, that is on the plan.
Okay, um, I have this, which isn't on the agenda, it's under administrative, when we approved the special permit sign for the Veterans Memorial, the big sign, we didn't send them anything in writing, saying it's been extended until, so, um, Ken had made up a letter, I gussied it up a little more, but, um, I'm going to guess, I give it to Kathy, and she somehow gets it to Jason.
Yes.
Yes, that's settled.
Okay, but you will need to sign it, and then you'll have, Kathy Kelly Reagan will get a copy too, I will, um, if you want, I can scan it in with the signature and send it to you, so you have it for your records.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay. And, I believe that is all that we have, that we can do.
Go back to the master plan real quick, so who's, is that going to be a group, going to be one representative from us, like, one, or?
What are we talking about?
The master plan?
Oh, the master plan?
Yeah.
Um, you mean, who's going to be involved in doing it?
Well, hopefully, the PVPC will be involved.
They will need it.
Right, will have come up, but, suggests is what we want to do, what, what are we looking for as far as the master plan, so, I mean, last, last time they did, it was a lot of different, they did zoning changes, that was a big thing.
But is it going to be a group, a committee?
Well, the way Larry did it, he had a, uh, public hearing.
Right.
Where any, any interested.
Oh, for the.
People came in, and they broke them up into groups, so that they could get their input.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, everybody had their little chalkboard and everything, and, and he combined all those answers together, and, then we went from there, but there are other, a lot of other pieces on the master plan that need to be updated by different departments, different areas, and that PVPC could coordinate.
Right, there's certain, certain parts that fall underneath ours, other boards.
And, and that would be covered under the DLTA grants, that would pay for their time.
Yep.
If we get it, correct me if I'm wrong, with the DLTA, money for the DLTA grants, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission gets from the state.
Yeah.
And to distribute to their members.
Right.
How they see fit, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's actually the state or federal government, I'm not sure it's one of those, but.
Right, and then the, um, towns that are affiliated with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission put in what they want, if there's more than one town looking for the same thing, they combine them, and they can get it done, you know, just two for one.
Was it, was it Munson we combined with before, or something?
For the permitting guide.
Permitting guide.
Which I have to get up on the, every time I'm ready to put it up there, there's a change on there.
Because they were working with Munson at the same time, working with us, so it kind of worked out, and, yeah, piggyback on the same, same money.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I don't think we have anything else, do you?
I don't believe so.
So our next, oh, we could go over the, um, the to-do list, and that's quite outdated, and.
Yeah, well, it's updated.
Get rid of both of them, um, okay, so, we have.
Well, if my name's not on there.
Uh, no, actually, Ken in mine, oh no, your name is on one, uh, final, Ken is, to finalize solar bylaw changed documents, send to Kathy Leonard, that's done, completed.
Should be done.
That was, these are from October, November, update zoning bylaws, Ken, with the changes, that's just done now, that's what you have in the blue packet there, the, the final changes, and of course. That's what you have in the blue packet there, the final changes, and of course, Chris found something in there that wasn't quite right, and, but it wasn't anything we addressed this time. It's, was left in there from before, it's on page 30, so...
Something to be addressed next time.
Three. Okay, follow-up, this is you Glenn, follow-up with Town Council regarding access to solar projects. That was way back in September.
That was way back, and I did follow up on it.
Okay, that's completed. Ken was to research prime farmland definition, which he did. And I was to create a response to Grandby DG Series zoning letter for your signature, which we did. And I was to create and send an email to Christina Boucher noting what documents are needed before the Planning Board can make a decision. I think she was asking about some land somewhere, I'm not sure about that. That was way back in September.
Way back, when?
Ken was to contact GZA regarding sending a letter, well, they expressed an interest in being on our preferred reviewer list.
Oh, right, right.
And they were supposed to send in a letter and credentials for us to consider. I'm going to not call that complete yet because we didn't hear anything on that. And I was working with Ken on the final permitting guide, I'm going to say ongoing on that. Have 10 copies of it printed, ongoing. Obtain pricing for hiring temp, that's ongoing for doing the records, meeting minutes. You still want to do, talk to the high school principal, or? I really don't think that'll...
I don't think it's going to work.
Pan out.
No, no, I think it best if we just find someone, and if we just find someone that's willing to do it, I mean, be very helpful, you know, someone that's in town, that just, I mean...
And I have a ongoing create a spreadsheet for PVPC charges, keep track of items to submit for Town Annex Report. Now, on the next agenda, we have all the postponed items from this, and we also have the Veterans Memorial Public Hearing at 5:15.
I think they're going to push that out.
They can, if they request it in writing, we don't have to... We don't have to put them on the agenda in that way, they don't have to appear here if they know they're not going to have it.
So if that's the case, very helpful, they just put it in writing.
Now, as far as February, we have the last week in February that we are supposed to be meeting, they're going to have early voting here, like they did last time.
Ah-huh.
So we can't meet here. Because we can't, once they set up the voting machines, they're not moving them, that's for pretty much all week, I think. So they should keep that in mind when they're looking to, when they can find, you know, come back. And we'll have to decide at our meeting in February, what, our first meeting, as to what, if we even need to meet at the next time.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that. If you need to meet, we got to find the place to meet.
Right.
And we can always meet at the...
Kathy had suggested...
The library, we met there before too, so if you have to meet.
But they're not open Monday nights. But we could potentially go in there, but then we've got the liability of locking up and, and somebody has to be there before they close, which we would be if we started at 5:00.
Yeah, we're starting at 5:00, we're just going to start till a lot of, yeah.
So we could do that, because economic development does that.
Yeah, we'll figure that out, yeah, when the time comes.
So in February, we would meet on the 10th and the 24th, so the 10th would be okay, but the 24th would not.
All right, so on the 10th, we'll discuss it and decide where we're going to be?
Because then in March, it won't be until, well, it'll be in the 9th of March, so it won't be.
Yeah, because we can meet at the Senior Center, or we can meet...
If we can meet at the Senior Center, that would be good.
We just, yeah, I mean, that's easy enough.
Because we need, especially if we have a public hearing, we would need...
We could do that, that's fine.
You got to clear it with Chris.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Now we got to hold on a street corner somewhere.
And Alex will be out there recording it. Okay, so our next planning board meeting is Monday, January 27th at 5:00 PM here.
All right. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Need a motion.
I'm going to motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?